Councillors of Perry has notified that he cannot be with us due to a death in the family. But we do have a quorum. And salute to the flag. Superintendent Austin, would you like to lead us in the salute to the flag, please?
I'd be most honored.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its
Thank you.
What an old teacher.
I think that's the best we've seen.
Yeah.
So introduction of elected officials. We will, we will introduce, we will let Superintendent Austin and Chairperson Watson introduce themselves first, and then the council will say hello to everybody. So I'm not sure which of you would like to. Chairperson Watson, would you like to introduce who you have with us?
If, if I could find out who, because there's way too many names in front of me. I think I did see Jane Giuliani is here. I see that Lee White is here.
Dr. Ackerman?
Doctor Ackerman.
Okay, super. That is great.
I know, I'm trying to go through two. I don't see.
I will be when we give our presentation, I will be, I can mention everyone's names, so at least the public can actually hear who are the members of the Board of Education. I'd be more than happy to do that at that point.
Very good. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I am Mayor Patrice Granatowski, and if the councillors just want to take the turns just telling everybody your name and letting them see your smiling face, that would be wonderful.
I'm Leanne Aubrey, proud member of the council. Your local realtor. Come on, Rachel.
Councillor Rachel Franco. Andre.
Councillor Andre Bumgartner. I'll pass it off to Councillors of Perry.
Joe made it in.
Yes, it's wonderful to see you, Councillors of Perry. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Nice to see you all, too.
We're just introducing ourselves. Councillor Bordelain, your turn.
Sure, Councillor Bordelain here. Good to see everybody. And who are we missing? I guess is Juan here, Councillor Melendez.
I don't believe he's in yet. We have Councillor Parker and Councillor Heed. If you just want to say hello to everybody.
Good evening, Councillor Juliet Parker. Thank you all for attending tonight.
Yes, and I, it's Councillor Conrad Heed. Also, happy to have everybody here. Thank you for coming. Bye bye.
All right, great. And Mr. Bert is here, the town manager.
Hello.
And Mr. Bert will be reading the notice of public hearing, please.
On a rotten notice of public hearing, notice is hereby given that the Groton Town Council will hold a public hearing on the FYE 2022 annual town budget pursuant to chapter nine, section nine point three point one of the town charter on Thursday, March 25th, 2021 at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Login information will be posted on the town website. The full copy of the budget estimates will be on file with the town clerk for public inspection, as well as online at the town's website.
Thank you, Mr. Bert. All right, we are going to have two budget presentations before we hear from our public. And this evening, we will have a presentation from the Superintendent of Schools and then the Town Manager. I would just like all the attendees and the panelists to mute yourselves, please, until you are recognized to speak with so many people in the meeting. It can get very noisy and distracting for the speakers. So thank you so much for doing that. We appreciate that. So we will turn the floor over to, we have, we're on item room number five A. Superintendent of Schools is going first this evening.
Thank you.
For, thank you.
Yes, Susan Austin, Superintendent of Schools, and I'm here with Kim Shepperson Watson, our board chair. And we have really been working on our budget since probably September. It's probably been the longest journey with the budget, but fortunately, Dr. Michael Grenier, who was with us until the end of December, really helped work with the central office, the principals, really outlining a superintendent's budget with me, and then bringing it to our board at in January, when I became superintendent. And at the out, at the onset of all of this, we recognize that the staffing, of course, is always the largest amount of any school budget. And because of contracts and the number of teachers that we have, we really came out first looking at a 3.1, and Mike and I knew instantly that we had to work harder and go through and scrutinize the budget. So eventually, I was able to bring it down to 1.1%. And then with the board's support and looking even closer, we were able to get it to 0%. So I want to say that, you know, at the front, but I want to kind of show you a little history tour of what makes up the budget and how we got there. So actually, Kim Shepperson Watson, the board chairman, will start us out. So I'm going to switch to the presentation.
It's like you could see my Vanna.
So she can share all the board members that work so diligently with me and with my staff on this budget. Take it away, Kim.
Thank you. Like you're my Vanna. It's so cool. I've always wanted the Vanna.
Yeah.
Great. So, um, so, um, good evening, everyone. Once again, my name is Kim Shepperson Watson, and I am the Chairperson of the Board of Education. And though I don't always like to read off slides, I really am going to read this one off because I think it's really important that the community know that there are really great people who work really hard in the district and had come together to work really hard on this budget, once again, with the superintendent and her staff. So Andrea Ackerman is the Vice Chair. We have Dean Antipas, Jane Giuliani, Liz Porter, Rosemary Robertson, Rita Volkman, Jay Whitelife, and Lee White, who are all current members of the Board of Education, who worked, and we saw each other a lot on Zoom in the past couple of months. The next couple of slides that Susan and I put together was really just kind of taking a look at sort of what this 0% budget is going to give you. And I think one of the things that we are, you know, we are doing this with opening two new elementary schools. We are having five, all of our elementary schools have five magnet themes. And we had that, those two beautiful buildings that are on the hill.
He concurs.
Yeah, he does. He comes to our meetings, too. So it's, it's kind of cool that he, that he travels from, from town to town meetings. But that it, we also had, it really supports what's happening in that campus with those two buildings of Fitch High School and the Groton Middle School. So, but still, we are keep, we're maintaining our effective class size. We have the Teachers College Readers Writers Project. We have, we continue to support our math and our science programs. And once again, going back to that campus where we have that international baccalaureate, a full year's program in our IB program is pretty important. Once again, I've talked about the five, the five elementary magnet schools, and at some, and I believe that we have talked about them in our liaison meetings with the town council and the RTM in terms of what the, the five different themes. And going forward with our, our school, our new school buildings, but we're also just making sure that our technology is up to date and that we have the initiatives that we need to have, specifically because in this past year, we found out how much we all are going to rely on the technology that's there. We do have a very vibrant and active vocational program for 18 to 22-year-olds. And we also have, as an enterprise fund, we also have a treehouse childcare program, which supports our families for the before and after-school care. And we are still incredibly thankful that we get to partner with the town and having a officer that supports our Fitch High School and a Groton Middle School with the dual funds between the Board of Education and the town budget.
So I think this page is really, a really important page. I know you all received a Board of Education budget book that outlines both object codes and function codes and goes into great detail. It's also online. And I know we'll have further conversations to get into some of the details. And if you have any questions, please feel free to send them to me so that I can be prepared, because I know Monday night will, Kim and I will be back again. So if there's anything that you're interested in after going through the board book or hearing this presentation, let me know ahead of time so I can make sure I'm prepared and do my homework. So I, I'd like to reference this particular chart. Every school district has object codes that start with 100 and go to 800. Salaries are the biggest portion of any school budget. And as I said, originally, it looked like 3.1%, but the 100s, the salaries, we had some contractual increases, but we were able to offset them by the efficiencies due to the consolidations of the elementary schools. You know, Mike and I went through carefully with the principals to see what we really needed in way of teachers, librarians, secretaries, you know, all the support staff. So we were able to make some consolidation, so that 3.1 came down to 2.0. In the 200s, that's our benefits, and we saw a 7% anticipated increase in claims and cost offset by a reduction in the health insurance reserve. So we were able to do that in order to bring this budget down. Purchased services, which are our 300s, there was an increase of cost of service provided by outside experts to support district needs. Oftentimes, that's the professional learning piece, the OTPT health services. And of course, there was a lot of professional learning because of going fully remote and having to do things we've never done before. So we did, even though that is a, a little bit up, only 1.6, you know, that was really due to kind of the nature of this year. For property services, 400, we were down. And that was lower experience and more in-house services with purchased, purchased equipment. So we were able to do different services because we were kind of ready to do that, and we had in-house capability. 500s, well, that's your bus transportation, and that is also another significant portion of any school bus of any school budget. There is also communications, tuitions for outside placement. So in that 500, we had to sustain some bus transportation that was no longer in the MSAP grant. But at the same time, you know, so it just went up the 1.5%. We're looking actually at a transportation audit this year, and we're working on that right now to see what's the most efficient way, especially with new magnet schools, that we can, but, you know, have bus transportation for all of our students. So I'm looking forward to getting that results, those results. In the 600s, we're looking at the supplies, and each of our schools have site budgets based on the number of students that they have. There's kind of this per pupil spending for supplies. Because this year was different than any other, and we wanted to provide toolkits for home and school and make sure that we had, you know, all the resources kids would need in a remote world or in an in-person world. We were fortunate to have the CARES Act and the Coronavirus Relief Act, because you see that the supplies is really kind of down, but it was because we had relief from some of those CARES Act grants. And we also saw increased, we're also thinking that there might be increased electrical costs for new buildings in addition to existing buildings that we already have. But we're not certain, and it really depends on, you know, how long we hold on to those buildings. And then 700 is our equipment, and there's a slight reduction. But we continue to really take care of our IT infrastructure. It's great to have the Chromebooks, and the state has certainly provided us with laptops, 1100 laptops, Dell laptops for the high school. And we've gotten books from the state, we've gotten Chromebooks from the state. But we need to keep up with our infrastructure, especially as we get ready to do assessments. And sometimes, you know, we're looking at those Wednesday, extra Wednesday mornings as extra days to be able to assess kids, so we're not interrupting instruction as much. So we have to make sure that we're able to do that. And then the 800s are really your dues and fees. And there is an increase of about $14,000 based on, you know, the NYPD and career programs where candidate schools, and so there were some requirements with that. And also because of the pathways. We're really looking forward to having kids have pathways in, you know, many more pathways in our school. And although the state calls it college and career, sometimes I think they believe more in the college aspect, and we're really looking at what a wonderful place we're in and the opportunities our students have where they can get educated by being in the trades and by going to Electric Boat. But we want them ready and know that those are also opportunities for them. So if you look at all of these categories and you look at, you know, some increases, some decreases, we were able to get to 0% increase, $0 increase. So when you look at FY 2021 budget, at 77,438,090, FY 22 will be exactly the same, 77,438,090. So I was really proud to work with the board and accomplish this feat, and it was a lot of hard work and a lot of meetings. But we feel really good about it. So. Does anyone have any questions while we're on this page with the numbers?
Is that better to be handled on Monday, if, for questions in terms of looking through the budget?
I think, I think we should stick with the presentation tonight.
Okay.
The night is mainly for the public to offer their comments.
Okay.
I would encourage councillors to record their questions as we're going. That way we are ready to go on Monday then. Thank you, Chairperson Watson.
So this graph really talks about the comprehensive Groton Public Schools budget categories. And all school budgets, at least three quarters of the budget is salaries and benefits, and this is no matter where you go. We're at 77.2% with our salaries and benefits. We also have tuition and contracted services that are about 8.3%, less than 10%. Transportation is less than 10%. Utilities and other services, telephone, network, software, 3.3, and then non-contractual expenses at 4%, which all adds up to the 100%. And then we always like to show you this history of the Groton Public Schools budget from 2011 to, I think we got it up to FY 22, which is 0%. So if you look at that, and if you just did a, a total average of the percentages, we would be about half a percent, a little over, in 11 years. And then the, the board is always interested in what is our expenditure per pupil, and the state really guides, gives us guidance on this. And if you look at, we have not received the FY 21 or the FY 22 budgets. You really have to close out the year to be able to understand what that actual number is. But if you look at FY 20, we had, we were $16,476.84, which was under the state average by $1,271.04. And I think that you see, it's kind of interesting, if you look at the variance from 2011, where we were pretty close to the state average. And if you come down to 2014, 15, when Mike arrived, and then, you know, just recently, in the past two years, we've been over $1,000 variance to the good. You know, below the state average. And then, how is the budget, how does the town pay for schools? You know, if you look at the pie, so really, we receive, we, meaning Grotons, you know, our town receives revenue from the state and federal government. So we have what is called the ECS or Education Cost Sharing, which is the largest portion of resources that come directly to the town to pay for education, and that's in the neighborhood of 94 million, close to $95 million. There's other state funds, $324,000, Federal Impact Aid. And I, I think many of you might have seen that Congressman Courtney had developed a bill that actually came from our business office, noticing it was really difficult to collect data from our families. So it was one of our administrative assistants who went to the business office manager and then to Dr. Grenier, who reached out to Ledger and found this was a really significant problem, and we were really nervous about losing funding. So Congressman Courtney created a bill, he got it through Congress, he got it through the Senate and was signed off in December, and I actually have this beautiful original plaque of this bill, you know, that became law in my office. I've got to find a really special place for it, so. So it, even though it says $3 million in the past couple of years, it looks like we've been given, or the town has been given directly another, about $1 million each year. So it sometimes comes in in phases, so we never really know until, you know, a couple of years later, how much it was for that year. So that's a real benefit to all of us, and that's because of our military children and for those who work on military bases at the casinos. So a lot of hard work goes into figuring out how many students in Groton, and we are the largest one in the state for Impact Aid. And then special education access cost, Medicaid, and other sources. So the total amount registers at close to 40%. So the rest, that 60%, that's given, that's done through taxpayers and through our town, you know, funding. So 60% of every education budget, a little over, is from the town, and 40% is from these different grants. And then our Board of Ed was really very interested in looking at all the grants that we have. And there are several different types. There's categorical grants, which we receive just because we fit the criteria, and, but we still have to apply for, and we have to do all the work for. And then there's competitive grants, which we go out for, and those have been in the way of the Department of Defense. We actually are applying for two additional Department of Defense grants, and we certainly will come to the town should we receive them in the way of STEM and career pathways, manufacturing pipeline, health, and more project lead the way. And, and making sure we have a careers pathway so that from the time kids are in elementary school, middle school, and high school, they have opportunities to explore what jobs are out there for them. So as you see, we have over $1 million in the competitive grants, we have over $3 million in the categorical grants, and we've been keeping track of what we've received in the CARES Act, or you'll hear it called ESER. So the first one that we received in the amount of $686,882, it was really, it came just at the right time when we were buying all the PPE and the cleaning supplies and the shields and, you know, everything we needed to be able to open up the school at the beginning of the year, and those purchases were done over the summer, and that was a wonderful resource. It provided even an extra social worker and a couple other staff members. Then there was this Corona Relief Fund, and we're going to show you a little bit more detail on the next page for that, but that was over $1 million. So all in all, Corona grants that have come to us so far have been close to $2 million, and the total of our grants is $6,364,978. So here are some of the areas that we're, we're able to help support us during the coronavirus and hybrid learning and the remote learning, in-person learning. And you see that we had to really have extra substitutes, we had to have extra tutors and teaching staff. Especially, you might have noticed, there were a couple of weeks that we had to go out full remote when Mike was here, and I had a couple of weeks when I was here, and that was really due administratively, not having enough staff, even with all the substitutes and the support that we were given through this Corona Relief Grant. They're just, people were not willing to come into the schools the way they had in the past to substitute. So it was really a tricky time. And I just so am appreciative of Ledge Light and helping us get vaccinated. So you see, technology, community coordinators, custodians, food services, supporting the meal distribution to our families. This year, you might be aware that because of earning cost meter and our food service program, which is an enterprise program, we've been able to feed breakfast and lunch to all of our kids every day, whether they're in here or remote. It's going to happen all the way through the summer, like always, and then in, through the end of September, and he's working on seeing what we can do for next year. Because we feel nutrition is the foundation of learning, you know, you have to be well-fed and ready to go to be able to do the learning. So the whole Corona Relief Grant was over $1 million. And this is your part, Kim, to wrap us up with our mission and our goals and our beliefs.
So I know that you can't necessarily see the picture, but we were able to get sort of real-time pictures. So if you notice, all of our students have masks on and as long, as well as the teachers. And the, the, the picture that's actually on the right is actually a classroom in the Groton Middle School. So it was a nice way to kind of have a sneak peek about what are, what, what, what one of the classrooms looks like. We continue to have mission statements and what we did over this past year based on the fact that the board and the district became very dedicated to really understanding the need for diversity, equity, and inclusive, that we actually, inclusivity. We actually developed a belief statement that we, that we, that we was wordsmith, and we're going to be spending some more time kind of really thinking about that. In fact, I know that their superintendent just actually got off of a DEI large meeting where we have about 80 people through across the district and the board that come together and, and, and think about that. But our goals continue to provide dynamic and rigorous curriculum that we ensure effective and engaging instruction and embrace excellent learning environments. And once again, thank you for the town to really support the fact that we have a brand-new middle school. We have two brand-new elementary schools, and we should not be, we could not be even prouder as a, I feel, as a community to really support our education and, and to help our town grow. But our new, our belief statement is to cultivate an environment of diversity, equity, and inclusiveness. And so that's, that's us, that's our budget, and I'm excited about being here tonight, and I'm looking forward to Monday's conversation as well.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to note Councillor Melendez has joined us as well. Alrighty, very nice. I appreciate you presenting that. It certainly sets the stage well for our discussion on Monday. And we are on to 5B now for Mr. Bert to present the town manager's budget.
Yeah, please. Evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. For the town, but part of, portion of the budget, it's been a much more difficult process. We have a lot of factors coming together that, that we're still going to have to wrestle through and work our way through, through the budget season. So what you see tonight, I anticipate, will change quite a bit throughout the process. We're still early in it. Just a little bit about budget dates. I'm not going to read all of this. I'll pick up where we're at right this second. By April 6, the town council must hold a public hearing. That's what we're doing right now. April 28, the town council must approve the budget by then. This year, it's anticipated on April 27. The RTM has to start their budget meetings by May 3, and then wrap up by May 25, and then the council sets the final tax rate on June, I do ninth. As role the council and RTM in the budget, only the council can increase an appropriation for a given department, including the Board of Ed, to a figure above that which was proposed by the town manager or the Board of Ed. RTM cannot adopt a budget which exceeds that which was proposed by the town manager unless the council adopts a budget that exceeds the town manager's budget. Our team cannot adopt a budget which exceeds that which was proposed by the town manager unless the council adopts a budget that exceeds the town manager's budget. Um, so that our team can't go beyond my budget unless the council went beyond my budget. The RTM can restore cuts of the council by a two-thirds majority vote. Um, and just a little bit more about, uh, responsibilities. I, I, I'm responsible for putting the budget together for town operations as well as capital projects and the bond, uh, bonding is underneath me. But many of the other things that the board of ed is solely in the purview of the town council. Our team, of course, this where we're at on mill rates in the region right now, our current mill rate for Groton is twenty-five point eleven. You can see there, you can take a look at one of what some of the numbers around us are. The average mill rates in the region is twenty-nine point eight-three. So we're still significantly under average. Matter of fact, I think only one town in the region is lower than us. Now I often hear, you know, of course we have fire department taxes, but most of these towns do and some have multiple fire departments like us. So that's a pretty common thing in Connecticut. So the base rates, though, uh, we're doing fairly good so far. Of course, we always want to keep it down. Uh, quick overview, our proposed budget is one hundred and thirty-eight million, six hundred and forty-seven thousand. It's an increase of just over eight million dollars or six point three percent. Uh, these are due primarily to a lot of it's to the ground in twenty twenty plan, uh, paying for the bonds. I'll go into that in a second. Uh, capital improvement projects, subdivision requests, meaning the city and Groton Long Point. Resilience position that's being proposed, some police, uh, personnel, uh, proposals. And then typical benefits and then some health and service increases. The proposed mill rate right now, which again, well, both for almost for sure change is twenty-six point two-two. That's an increase of one point eleven or four point four percent. Um, without the school bonding and I, and I think we're all in favor, love the new school, middle school and others coming along, but we are having to add that into our debt. That goes on to the town budget. So far with the next month's, um, uh, bond issuance, we're going to be, uh, five million in debt per year. And we'll be doing two more issuances. So we can expect this to increase more over the next two years. If you took the Groton twenty twenty out, uh, that would reduce the mill rate by one point three eight at this point. So it has a significant impact, but it is what everyone voted voted for and that was expected to happen to have the mill rate increase. I am proposing a fun use of fund balance for about two, two point eight million dollars. Um, just to kind of level out, not to have to cut and not to have to increase the mill rate as much as we would have had to. And I mentioned a few minutes ago, the positions we're looking at. Uh, several things in the police department, a full-time community police officer to interact more in, uh, with the community. Full-time social worker position trying to, uh, um, you know, we have a world-class police department, but trying to do even better and, uh, and, uh, keep improving. Uh, and then some part-time community service officers to do some of the things that might not take an officer to do. But we, it can do it at a lower cost with these people. And then for, under the planning budget, we're looking at a full-time client resilience, climate resilience program manager. Um, we've, you know, of course, we're all, we're on, we're on the sound and we're already seeing some effects of climate change. It's something we have to address, uh, earlier rather than later. Those new positions have a cost of about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, just a quick note on fund balance use and where I came up with that. Uh, part of it comes out of CIPs. The town's traditionally done about two million dollars in, uh, expenditures for CIP projects. Um, I personally, I think that has been too low to maintain our, our facilities. Um, but this year we've been over the last few years, uh, bonding for our road projects. That money is running out. We have about four hundred thousand left in the current bonded account. Where instead of bonding it again and incurring, uh, interest costs, we're going to add it back into our CIP budget, which is about a million dollars more. So that's another addition to the budget that, um, is new this year. Um, and then I'm also putting in about one point three million dollars uh, above that for, for projects, above the two million base and the one million for roads for things I that we've put off and I want to have a discussion on whether we want to pursue these projects or possibly cut them out of the list permanently. Um, the total is per CIPs is four point three five one million. I am anticipating quite a bit of growth over the next two years. If you've seen all our school projects we've got going, um, more to come as well as there's actually quite a bit of private investment separate from our properties going on in the towns. And of course you have the electric boat growth. So over the next, uh, couple of years, I anticipate a lot of these things coming online and our revenue increasing. So my intent is to use some fun balance each year to try to level out, prevent a higher, uh, level of, uh, mill rate. Um, so the reason for the two point eight five one million for fund balance usage is the one three five one above the CIP base that I talked about in another one point five million generally for mill rate stabilization. That's what adds up to the two point eight five one. Um, right now our fun, our unassigned fund balance for the town for our general fund is twenty percent. And with the use of this two point eight million, it would be at eighteen percent. Uh, town operations, um, over the last, uh, ten years or so, it's, uh, averaged an increase of one point eight percent. And we've had many wild things. We, uh, things that go on with the state budget often affect us and there's other projects like the Groton twenty twenty, the last couple of years always seems to be something that is a difficult challenge. And just for reference, uh, the CIP average for the last ten years was about the, about, uh, the consumer price index was about one point six average. Now this page is the most of what I myself put together, what I'm in charge of. I, and, uh, by the way, I'd like to give a shout out for our finance staff who, who do most of the work and, uh, I make more decisions. Um, we have, uh, some of the, uh, yellow highlights and the blue highlight shows some of the, what the bigger increases are. So these are all the departments through here. Um, the biggest increases that I mentioned, public safety, you have those new positions. There's a little bit put in there that's required as part of the new police accountability act. For instance, uh, all your officers have to have a mental health check every five years. There's some things like that that we've had to add in. Um, well, you know, all good things, but they do cost some money. Planning department, we have the resilience position, um, and a couple of other small things for about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar increase or eight point three percent. Now, of course you have, uh, about eight hundred and sixty thousand increase, increase under, uh, non-departmental. The first category is insurance and claims that went up by about seventy-five thousand. That's things like unemployment, uh, property insurance, liability insurance, that type of thing. So I did go up by about ten, ten or eleven percent. Self-funded plans, that would be both our health insurance as well as our other post-employment benefits. Um, we actually, in terms of the rates, did not see a whole lot of change this year. What we're doing is the last few years, the OPEB or the other post-employment benefits has been cut significantly. And so we've, uh, tried to start putting us up more where we should be contributing. So that is a discussion we'll have. The health budget, we have been, uh, we've had a debt, we're, we have a debt of our deficit situation of, uh, deficit situation of about, uh, and I think it's, let's see, uh, we, we have to pay off the, I'm forgetting, sorry, we have to pay off the deficit. I think this year we're looking at, uh, paying about three hundred thousand on that. So that's another, uh, item we'll have to discuss, but it does need to be caught up. We're looking at the, I think it's a ten-year period for catching that up. The, uh, subtotal other town, so, uh, contribution to other funds last year. Not knowing what was going to happen with COVID, COVID was hitting right when we were starting. We're right into this budget process, right about this time of year last year. As that happened, we cut out everything we could cut out, um, not knowing, you know, what kind of predicament we would be in. Well, now we have to bring our levels back up, um, to where they should be. And we went bare bones this year and cut out all vehicle purchase, everything else we could cut out. So that's, that's the main reason is getting this back up to where it should be, um, for the five hundred thousand dollar increase in contribution to other funds. So the total town operations cost increase is about one point eight, one point nine million or five point one percent. Um, and again, a, a lot of that is the, uh, the health insurance, OPEB and other insurance. Uh, one other thing undermined is cap, uh, capital, uh, projects. Um, that is up about three point eight million. Again, we cut everything we could last year. We were actually down to five hundred thousand last year when we usually spend closer to two million. Um, so we are getting that back up. And then like I said, adding a couple more projects in. That is, I'm sure we'll have a lot of, uh, discussion on which projects are priorities. Um, so I expect that'll change. A debt service, this reflects the one point four here is the dirt issuance that's coming on for the Groton twenty twenty. So another one point four million, like I said, totaling about five million dollars so far. And then, uh, you got education budget here. Regional agencies, health and service agencies, health and service, I mean, increased request of about a hundred and forty-two thousand. This is in the purview of the town council. So they'll be reviewing this request. Uh, for the subdivisions, city and fire, or city and, um, sorry, city and Groton Long Point. That's about an eight hundred thousand dollar increase in request. That's another thing that this town council will be reviewing. So altogether, general fund changes about six point three percent, eight point two million dollars. Um, this kind of, this kind of gives you a visual of where those increases are. You'll see, uh, departments about one point, one point eight percent. Um, you'll see non-departmental is about seven point eight percent of the increase, other contribution to other funds. Um, oh, that's increased by fifty percent. Sorry, let's look at the bill right here. So departments about one, about an equivalent of point one, two, three of a mill increase. Non-departmental is about an equivalent of point two, three, three mill increase contribution to other funds, point one, five. Capital debt services, one point four, one, nine. Um, so that's a, a significant one. Outside agencies about point zero, three, nine. And subdivisions about point two, two, one. You can see, uh, though, again, that capital projects, uh, debt service is the lion's share of this here. Oh, five million, five point two million increase. Um, that's what I have at this point. Again, uh, uh, you know, it's going to be challenging budget year. I do expect this to, you know, to change. But a lot of it is things that are required and we won't have a lot to say about, but there are areas we will build a cut. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bert. Alright, so, um, we are going to head into the, um, opening of the public hearing. This is item six A, twenty twenty-one, two oh five, F Y E, twenty twenty-two proposed budget. Um, we have people that have signed up to speak through, um, the manager's office and I will be going through according to the list that I have here. You will have, um, five minutes each. I'll set the timer when you start. I ask you to, um, remain muted until your call to speak. That way we can hear everybody clearly, please. And, um, just take a look at something here. Alright, I think we're good to go. So we will begin with, um, Zell Stever, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, um, mayor, um, manager and council members. I'm Zell Stever. And I'm chairman of the Groton Resiliency and Sustainability Task Force. Other than the one Main Street, Groton, we are offering a written statement in support of the town budget, which creates and funds a new position of resiliency and sustainability manager for Groton. The Groton Town Council on March second passed a groundbreaking resolution addressing climate change, resiliency and sustainability as a central management, management principle for all actions by the town government. This reg, uh, resolution include creating a new position, manager of resiliency and sustainability. After more than a year of meetings with department heads, other senior leaders in Groton on climate change and what actions have been undertaken by the town. The task force overall findings where that the top level, uh, coordination of among departments is necessary as many crucial issues will otherwise remain unaddressed in an effective, uh, in an effective manner. For example, installation of solar electric panels on all appropriate buildings remains unrealized in spite of various energy studies and proposals made during the past decade. New school buildings are being constructed without solar panel technology being required. This is all money being left on the table. There has been little focus on the long-term impacts of sea level rise on our infrastructure, roads, treatment plant facilities and how to protect these facilities during storms or flood events. Buildings and facilities continue to be built in flood zone. Why? Three days short of ten years ago, on March twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven, I testified at the budget hearing before the town council back then to hire a staff person to work on energy efficiency and conservation to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions to no avail. I presented the case at the time, Stanford, Connecticut had saved nineteen point three million in just energy sector over a twelve-year period from nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand and nine by hiring one person to manage Stanford's climate program. We now know what the impacts of COVID nineteen looked like on our community. We're just beginning to hopefully emerge with a new vaccine from this pandemic, which has impacted so many here in Groton. Now, in stark contrast, the evolving climate crisis will have no vaccine or drugs to prevent, treat or cure the climate problems that we will face. However, we can be prepared for and mitigate many of the consequence consequences. We need to start now. In closing, there are huge opportunities and challenges before our community. We will save taxpayers money, make Groton a better place to live, work and play if we hire a person to reduce our carbon footprint and our address our vulnerabilities to the effects of climate change and secure funding to these ends. Thank you very much on behalf of the task force.
Thank you, Mr. Stever. Next on the list I have Peter Roper.
Good evening, everybody. First, thank you all your counselors and board of ed members for your, uh, volunteerism for the town of Groton. I, I know it's kind of a thankless job in many ways, but I, I do appreciate it and I think many other people do too. Um, I'm, I'm here to speak in favor of what the last speaker just spoke about, the, uh, climate resilient sustainability manager. I think it's a no-brainer. I think it's a moneymaker. It's absolutely necessary. Uh, it should not be put off. I'm glad it's in the budget. I hope it stays in the budget and is expanded if possible. Uh, I know many of the people on the Groton Resiliency Sustainability Task Force. I have to say it's a very quality group and if they're for it, we all should be for it. So thank you for your time and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Roper. Uh, the next person I have on the list is Sally Booth, but I don't see Ms. Booth in the attendees. Mr. Bert, do you see Ms. Booth listed?
Not seeing.
Okay. Well, we can come back if, um, if she gets here. So we will go on to, um, Jim O'Donnell. Is Mr. O'Donnell here? Mr. O'Donnell, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. My, my name's, uh, Jim's O'Donnell. I live at sixteen Brook Street in Noick. I'm a professor of marine sciences at the University of Connecticut. I've been a member of the governor's council on climate change since it started and under the previous governor. Last year I co-chaired a subcommittee on science technology that prepared a pretty comprehensive summary of what we should expect to happen to climate and to sea level, uh, and, and also what might happen. There's uncertainty, but our program can outlines it. Then the, I've been involved in development of many resilience and adaptation projects in towns across the state since I've been director of CIRCA since its founding in twenty seventeen. The CIRCA is the Connecticut Institute for Resilience and Climate Adaptation. Uh, but today I'm here because I'm a resident of Groton for thirty-five years now. And I want to commend the members of the Groton Resiliency and Sustainability Task Force for their insightful work in their report. And I support the recommendation that the town fund a manager for resiliency and sustainability to work at a high level in the administration of the town and to ensure coordination across the components of the town government. CIRCA will be releasing a broad set of recommendations for towns soon, but, and I don't want to pre, present them here, but I'll summarize a few things which go towards why you need, uh, a manager for resilience and sustainability. The first thing to recognize, I think, uh, leaders and both and residents is that there's a big cost of not taking action now. Repairs will be needed more frequently soon. Insurance costs will go up and maybe even the town bond rating might go down if, if we don't act. These, the, these things have happened elsewhere. They should also recognize that federal funds will continue to go to the best organized states and towns. And, and they're funded by taxes that we pay too. So Groton and Connecticut should be in the group of people, of towns and states that receive funds and they need to be well organized to do that. The second group of things that we need to do is we need to be sure we don't create new problems in the twenty fifty flood zone, not the twenty twenty-one. And all the invent, so all the investments and repairs and upgrades that we plan for, should be planning for a twenty fifty condition. Uh, small investments and upgrades now beyond what we might need, but we will need in twenty fifty. We've got a big payoff. Finally, uh, in this group of easy things to do, we want to take advantage of investing programs that offer grants and reduce costs like the FEMA Community Rating System Program and the Miller Resilience Competitions. Now the hard stuff is, uh, we decide on priorities soon and design adaptation plans will work. Now, the hard stuff is we decide on priorities soon and design adaptation plans will work. They're cost effective and that people in the neighborhood where they occur, they want them. That's not an easy thing. And if the advanced economic development goals or other goals of the town, that's great too. So coordination is important. Multiple planning processes must be conducted simultaneously if we're going to be equitable. So we have to do things in multiple parts of the towns and not just in the noisiest parts. Some problems and solutions require consultation with other towns too, and we know that's not easy. So then we need to compete for federal programs for funding to implement plans and decide how to equitably pay for the town's cost share of these programs. And there are bills under consideration at the Capitol right now to provide more flexibility in how towns can generate funding for resilience and adaptation projects. And I hope CIRCA will be able to help with the technical and planning challenges that our towns are facing. So someone in town government needs to ensure that we're doing all these things for the next thirty years. And while sustaining the regular business that you're going to be talking about tonight too. It seems to me that this position should have a high priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Next I have Jen O'Donnell.
My name is Jennifer O'Donnell. I'm a three year resident of Groton, living at sixteen Brook Street. I'm a coastal engineer with years of experience in coastal resiliency and sustainability issues for federal and state governments. I was a member of the Connecticut Task Force on Ancient Shoreline Preservation, which was created in response to storms Irene and Sandy. More recently, I've been assisting towns in Connecticut and New York State in identifying coastal risks and proposing protection and adaptation measures. I would like to express my support for creating and funding a new position of manager of resiliency and sustainability within the town of Groton twenty twenty two budget. Groton has been impacted by the effects of climate change now with Long Island Sound to the south and bounded by the Mystic River, Thames River to the east and west, as well as the Quonic River and Jordan Brook. Groton is particularly susceptible to sea level rise. Groton has already sustained coastal erosion and sunny day flooding. These effects of climate change will only become more pronounced and problematic in the future. We frequently hear of twenty inches of sea level rise by twenty fifty or prediction for water levels in twenty one hundred as if water levels will stop rising at this point. However, scientists are certain sea levels will continue to rise, but are not yet able to predict further into the future. The effects of climate change will impact almost every aspect of town governance and budgeting, planning and zoning, public works, parks and rec, as well as building codes, assessments, community development, conservation, economic development, harbor management, historic districts, wetlands, selfish and water pollution. And these are the only the ones that will be affected by sea level rights. Climate change will affect more than sea levels. For instance, climate change will also influence air and water temperatures, precipitation and potentially the frequency and intensity of storms, to name a few expected impacts. So Groton needs a concerted, comprehensive and coordinated approach to addressing the consequences of climate change. A resiliency and sustainability manager would provide the expertise and coordination among the town's departments, boards and commissions to ensure that solutions to a problem in one area do not result in unintended consequences in another. Climate change will not only affect Groton and other coastal communities. Every community will be vying for financial assistance in dealing with the effects of climate change. A resiliency manager would be able to collaborate with managers and experts from other municipalities and states, combining knowledge and expertise to ensure Groton uses its resources effectively. Climate change is not going to go away, so it is in Groton's best interest to prepare for and mitigate the effects of climate change now. The longer we wait to address the climate concerns, the greater the financial burden will be on the town. Therefore, I recommend the funding of a Groton manager of resiliency and sustainability. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. Next, we have Ann Schmidt.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Ann Schmidt and I live at seven Bradley Lane in Mystic. Tonight, I would like to express my strong support for the creation and funding of the new position resilience and sustainability manager for the town of Groton. In Groton, we have experienced increasing number of strong storms with high winds and increased precipitation. We have also experienced sea level rise and increased coastal and inland flooding. The average temperature in Connecticut will continue to rise coupled with increased periods of drought and extreme weather resulting in profound health and quality of life impacts on residents. Recently, the town adopted a resolution making a commitment to address climate change resilience and sustainability as a central management principle for all actions of the town government. Part of that resolution included hiring a resilience and sustainability manager for the town. This person needs to be a highly qualified, strong leader who can help town employees and elected officials incorporate climate change, adaptation, mitigation and resiliency solutions into practice in all departments as well as legislative policy. For town leaders and residents, this person will be a fantastic resource. We have to act now to reduce the severity of global warming impacts in our community, build resiliency and incorporate sustainable practices in all aspects of what we do so that residents of the town of Groton will thrive with increased protection for safety, public health and the environment. I'm very excited that with the hiring of a resilience and sustainability manager, significant action will be taken after more than ten years of research and discussion. Taking action now will result in meaningful and timely improvements to the environment, economy, health and well being of the community, not only for us, but for future generations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Next, we have Roger Coons.
Thank you very much. Thank you, counselors, for this chance to support the position of Climate Resilience and Sustainability Manager for the town of Groton. I wholeheartedly agree with the previous statements and the details given by
Mr. Coons, could you state your name and address for the
My name is Roger Coons and I'm a small business owner here in town, helping people with sustainable practices, applications in their homes and businesses. I live at seven Bradley Lane in Mystic. My many years of experience in applying sustainable practices has shown me that sustainability is protection and improvement of a diverse and healthy environment, a resilient and socially supportive community and a balanced and equitable economy. We do not have all of these balanced at this time. I fully support this position and see it as a very badly needed addition to the town's governance as we face increasing issues of climate impacts, affordable, clean energy, social and environmental challenges, and many other aspects of working towards a sustainable and resilient community. I see that it's imperative that this position be filled by a fully qualified, non partisan individual who understands the complexities and subtleties of a community such as ours. This position is critical for the collection and assessment of data regarding meaningful, timely forward progress on sustainable actions, the finding of funding and the competitive grants out there. And as a go to person for both our town leaders and our residents to guide us into better informed, meaningful and time sensitive policies. What I mean by that is we've run out of time to put this off any longer. This position can also be a bridge building position for factual information, education and solution finding for the town of Groton. I think that the position should also help address disadvantaged and marginalized people in our town to work towards a truly balanced economy, society and environment. This includes climate change adaptation, of course, but also aggressive installation of solar renewable energy resources, especially behind the meter solar on homes, schools and businesses. The updating of building codes and other policies, healthy food access for everyone, affordable public transportation, the pursuit of living wage jobs and associated training and equity and other important aspects of applying sustainability to this town. All of these aspects are related and directly within resilience and sustainability and climate impacts, all of these things, especially people that do not have the financial wherewithal to rebound after impacts as we've seen with COVID nineteen. So I really hope we get this position. We need it badly. And as Al said, it's been a long haul since he first suggested it. I fully endorse the position of a climate resilience and sustainability manager for the town of Groton. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Coons. Next, we have Larry Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. Larry Dunn, ninety one Crosswinds Drive in Groton. I guess I have a few comments. I diverged from the sustainability one, although I'll come back to it. First of all, I think on the overall budget, I thought it was a tough job to do as well structured and reasonable. I support increasing and building the C I P. I also noted that there was an increase in the I T budget and being a basically my career in I T. I would say that it's probably should be more rather than, you know, more than the increase that was there. I think some of the key areas which would wind up actually saving Groton some money in terms of the area of cybersecurity, looking at ways of improving, you know, what I term automation in order to actually save costs. And then the cost avoidance part to use the I T investment to actually leverage some of the services that we had. That's a much longer discussions. I really won't get into it at this point. The second area that was increased, which I also support is in the Parks and Recs Department. And I think a lot of that has been driven by the exponential use of the open space in the parks during the COVID era. I hope it's an error and that we're over it. However, I think that because of the significant increase in use, that's not going to go back to old or pre COVID levels. I think people have gotten a much greater appreciation and that use will stay at a pretty high level and therefore the increase in cost or support in that area, I think, is important. Getting back to sustainability, I'll take pretty pragmatic. There's a lot of comments on the position. I support the position from a little bit different perspective. I agree with everything that was said, but I think in the the long run, in the long run, I'm talking about probably the next twelve to eighteen months, having that position will be, I believe, mandatory and will actually generate increased funding for the town to address a number of its of its issues. If you've looked at the executive order for the climate and sustainability areas, I fully expect significant funds in this next tranche in terms of infrastructure will require a sustainability manager type of program and interface. And I think the issue with the what we have here is exactly who that person should be in the qualifications. I think the need for it is, you know, without question, it will be a profit. I hate to use the word a profit maker for the town. In addition, the other element that's buried in that executive order is an objective of thirty by thirty, which is thirty percent of land areas should be open space as part of that sustainability effort. We're in pretty good shape. We're nowhere near thirty percent. So I think the investment of the twenty five thousand per year to contribute to the open space fund, I think, is appropriate. Like to be bigger, of course, but I think it's great that it's there and I would support that as well. I think that kind of wraps up my comments and I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Next is Kathy Chase, Representative Chase.
Thank you, Mayor. Kathy Chase, one forty six Indian Field Road. I'm also a member of the R T M representing District One. While I appreciate the fact that the Board of Education budget will not increase for F Y twenty two, I have concerns. The years prior to the Groton twenty twenty plan being approved by the voters, it was stated over and over there would be great savings by closing schools, consolidating and building new schools. The F Y twenty one budget request was approximately a half million dollars over what it was in F Y twenty. It was not approved, but nevertheless it was requested. Now, the F Y twenty two budget has no increase. Here is where my concerns lie. In order to have a zero percent increase, a little over eight hundred thousand dollars of the budget is being supplemented by the Health Reserve Fund. The money has to be returned next year from what I understand. How is that going to happen? It originally was one point five million, but I see in tonight's presentation the reason it was cut, I'm assuming, is because there were reductions in other line items. I work with budgets in my daily job, yet I have never heard of the term cost avoidance until Dr. Grenier used it regarding the budget. So I Googled it. It said, cost avoidance is any action that avoids incurring of costs in the future. Okay, new schools, less maintenance for the immediate future, except I learned tonight that the electricity costs are increased because of the new schools. Whereas cost savings is any action that results in a tangible benefit that lowers current spending. Remember, savings is what was told to us while promoting the Groton twenty twenty plan. So since the public was told there would be savings, where is it and how do we get it? The taxpayers have to pay back one hundred eighty four point five million dollars for the new schools if the entire amount is bonded. Hopefully they'll come in under budget. We have twenty years to pay this all back. Yes, all of it. We all pay town, state and federal taxes, which is where all of this money comes from. We are paying all one hundred eighty four point five million dollars from one pocket or another, again, if it is all bonded. Each time a new bond is purchased, our taxes will be increased. The bonding is done as the building continues and more money is needed to pay expenses. We have already started paying back what has already been bonded. And as we learned tonight, one point three mils of our of our total mill rate is just for the schools and that will increase with continued issuance of bonding until the project is complete. I understand taxes have to increase as expenses increase. However, we, the taxpayers, were promised savings for the school budget, which savings is for current spending. Help me and the rest of taxpayers understand where the cost avoidance and the savings are. I don't see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Chase. Next is Chris Kuhn.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Granatowski and members of the town council. My name is Chris Kuhn. I live at one oh four Irving Street in Groton and I am here tonight on behalf of Groton Conservation Advocates to voice our strong support for putting into the budget the proposed full time Groton Resilience and Sustainability Manager for the town of Groton. We believe that Groton will reap the benefits of hiring such a person many, many times over. We are seeing countrywide the increasing occurrences of climate change related disaster, raging firestorms, extreme hurricanes and sustained drought. We know that a predicted twenty inch sea level rise along our own coast by twenty fifty is deemed to be inevitable. In the face of both predicted changes and an unpredictable future, Groton needs to be prepared, more resilient to coastal storms, more energy efficient and more ready for weather disasters. The resolution you adopted on March second cites many local climate impacts and importantly commits the town to adopting strategies that will make our community safer and more sustainable going forward. Around the state, nation and world jurisdictions are reacting to the ever more dire manifestations of climate change and scrambling to take action and make up for lost time. Although Groton has recognized for years numerous risks that ought to be addressed, the town has lacked the staff and resources necessary to do so. Hiring a resilience and sustainability manager now has become critical to enabling the town to take advantage of many opportunities and resources rather than watch them slip by. Importantly, the likely dramatic expansion in federal funding for climate adaptation measures such as infrastructure projects that are often the first line of defense can only be accessed if the town has the staff to write proposals. can only be accessed if the town has the staff to write proposals. Furthermore, there's legislation pending in the General Assembly to expand the role of the state's successful Green Bank, which will be a source of significant financing for developing Groton's resiliency. We hope that the Town Council will take advantage of these critical opportunities for Groton and fund this position. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kuhn. Next is Kristen Distante.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kristen Distante from 82 Irving Street in Mystic. And I want to applaud the Town Council for adopting the resolution of commitment to address climate change, resiliency and sustainability as a central management principle for all actions of the town government. Thank you for your excellent and responsible leadership on that issue. Climate change, creative difficulties over the coming decades. Groton will be significantly impacted by sea level rise in particular. Freshwater problems of both periodic shortage and excess, which mean both drought and flooding, can both be anticipated as the climate swings amplify. Greater temperature extremes are predicted along with more frequent and severe storms, storm events such as blizzards, hurricanes, tornadoes, thunderstorms. The warmer climate is anticipated to bring in invasive species and pathogens for both animals and humans. All these unprecedented changes will have impact in a multitude of aspects of life in Groton, including agricultural productivity, which would include our oyster beds in our farms, our infrastructure, bridges, roads, our tourism industry, insurance requirements of both, you know, individuals and businesses, boating both as a sport and a manufacturing business such as EB, manufacturing businesses, home and energy business requirements, forest and ecological health, our economy and especially our human health. So there are lots of impacts that we cannot anticipate. Because of the severity and complexity of the challenges that global climate change will bring to our town and its citizens, it's essential that it not be handled in a random, piecemeal or haphazard fashion. A fully dedicated climate resilience and sustainability manager position is an appropriate and necessary beginning. I strongly urge you to continue to look out for our best interest in the future and dedicate budget funds to the position of the Climate Resilience Manager. Thank you all for your continued hard work and your dedication to all of us in Groton. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Howard Bee. I apologize if I pronounced it incorrectly, sir.
Howard Bee, you did fine with that. Thank you, Mayor and members of the Town Council. I live at 10 Prospect Street in Mystic and I thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening in support of funding for the Resistance and Sustainability Manager. The need to create and fund the position and to get a well-credentialed person on the job as soon as possible seems to me to be plain from two perspectives. The urgent need to deal with climate impacts that are already upon us and the need to seize opportunities likely to arise under emerging infrastructure proposals on the federal level and, I believe, state level to obtain funding for projects that are geared to protect our coastal roads, homes, businesses and parklands. The proposal has already been supported this evening by expert analysis, to which I can only add my own views as one of our taxpayers and as one of our many witnesses in this town to the growing urgency for action of this kind. Many people in this town who have a connection to the sea, either as boaters or members of the maritime business community or owners of property near the coasts have already seen the increasingly dire impacts of climate change. As a 12-year volunteer at Mystic Seaport, I see it in more frequent and more severe flooding of the grounds. As a local resident, I see it in the increasing encroachment of river water on the roads and the shrinking margin between water levels of what are now normal high tides and surrounding land, parks, lawns and other property, often just inches to spare. We can see with our own eyes, our own eyes confirm that climate change predictions have not been too extreme, but if anything, too conservative and appear to be outpaced by actual events. I'm not speaking specifically on my own behalf. My own home is somewhat removed from today's front lines, well up on a hill where sea level is unlikely to reach it for some substantial period at least. But I'm concerned about our community and believe that we have to pull together to preserve all of that community. While the overall problem of controlling greenhouse gases requires a robust national and worldwide effort, I believe there's a moral obligation as well as a practical need to do what we can to eliminate practices that harm the environment and adopt practices that help sustain it. And I'm glad to see that that's part of the mission statement for this new position. But beyond that, and while we strive to achieve that, we have to face the fact that even the most robust response on the local, state and federal level will not stop the waters from rising for the foreseeable future or keep storms from hitting our coast with greater frequency and severity. It would be foolish to trust entirely in others to come to our rescue. We who know our area best and have the most at stake must embark on the hard task of making our community better able to withstand rising waters and what are literally gathering storms. I believe that sound fiscal as well as environmental policy requires us to plan with this goal in mind, to build with this goal in mind, to put ourselves in the best possible position to learn of and compete for federal and other grant opportunities that become available for these purposes. We have a rare combination of great need in light of what's presently happening on other government levels, a great opportunity to secure outside contributions to address that need. In matters that are so complex, so pressing, and in which the opportunities for financial assistance may be so fleeting, we need somebody, in my opinion, who can address the matters on a full-time basis, who is not burdened by other pressing governmental matters unrelated to environment, who can coordinate with similar people in surrounding communities and who has the expertise required to fully meet the challenge. For all of these reasons, I urge this investment in the preservation and future of our community, hopeful and indeed confident that it will yield a solid return in grants secured, in property damage averted, in property values maintained and longer lifespan of roads and other infrastructure projects engineered to meet the coming challenges, as well as savings of the type already mentioned to be realized along the way from conversion to solar cells and other departures from fossil fuels. Beyond what I think are economic advantages rather than net costs from this proposal, also important and ultimately perhaps most important is the peace of mind that can only come from knowing we're doing what we can to meet one of the most pressing challenges of our time and all time, rather than kicking it down the road to be addressed later in a more serious, costly, dire situation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I applaud you for what you've done so far on this issue and urge you to see it through to completion.
Thank you, sir. Next is Mike Whitney, Representative Whitney.
Hi, thank you. I'm Mike Whitney. I live at 112 Deerfield Ridge Drive, Mystic, Connecticut. And I'd like to say it's a challenging year as it was last in many ways for the Groton community and certainly is with the budget. And it's a new climate funding and expense-wise, too. I was pleased to see with the presentation for the Board of Education budget that is clearly delineated the how new funding, the CARES Act and other COVID-related recovery funding supported the budget and how it would support next year's budget as well, the one we're going to work on. And I'd like to see the same clarity in the rest of the town budget, too. And I know that's going to change as we go on through the budget process, but I think it's important to say many times how these funds are helping out the entire budget and what they're going to. And our community, as I said, faces many challenges. One of them, there are many economic challenges. And one thing I think we can do as a town to help would be to avoid any large tax increases. And I say that knowing that this is a time when we expect more of government as a community, as the society as a whole. And then naturally, costs go up as well. And hopefully, I'm hoping the state and federal funding can help with that. And also, we do have many additional community needs. Education is one of them. We have to do everything to support the children recover from a year of interrupted education in a challenging time. And I think these needs are going to be felt for years to come. So I know we have a zero budget increase proposed this year, but going forward, we have to look towards the additional new needs of our children. And I also say that it's important this year, as always, to support the outside health and service agencies. And I'd say actually, it's even needed more than ever. The manager's budget, the increased funding for that, overall, it's increased. And I think even maybe individually as well. I'd also like to, you know, these are important functions, Ledge Light, of course, Visiting Nurse Association, the ambulances, libraries and all the outside service agencies as well. They do important work. And with the support of our town government, they can, it's a force multiplier, really. They can do even more and reach more people. I would encourage the Town Council to support the town manager's numbers in this way and even consider increasing, for instance, the Meals on Wheels allotment to their request. And in these ways, I think through the budget process, we can plan for a stronger Groton. And that's very important with every year and particularly in these challenging times. And I'd also like to say it's important to plan for resilient Groton as well. As environmental scientists and also a concerned citizen, it's great to see efforts, new efforts to contend with the ongoing climate crisis. We are a vulnerable coastal community. And it's important to keep our eyes on the continuing climate crisis even amidst this pandemic. So I know we have a challenging budget year ahead of us. I'd just like to keep in mind, not just this year, but where we want to see Groton grow to in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dana Oviad.
Hi, my name is Dana Oviad, 68 Front Street. I want to thank and congratulate the Town Council for passing the resolution addressing climate change. I appreciate the chance to speak in enthusiastic favor for funding a resiliency and sustainability manager in the budget. Global warming will force us to alter our lifestyles. I ride my bicycle on a regular basis around town. There are two sections of my route that have been increasingly susceptible to flooding over the years. The first is the railroad bridge underpass that leads into Buff Point State Park. The second is the railroad underpass along South Road on the way to Groton Airport. It takes only a little imagination to envision what these two situations will be like in just 10 or 20 years. We can't stop climate change in the near term, but we can reduce the cost and psychological stress of adapting by planning for and anticipating the future. And I strongly urge you to fund this position. Thank you so much for all the hard work that you do.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to Frank Hilbert, but I'm not seeing chief in the list. Mr. Bird, do you see Mr. Hilbert?
I'm seeing him. We may have lost him.
Tony Manfredi.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Councilors. My name's Tony Manfredi. I live at 201 Daniel Brown Drive in Mystic. I'm the Deputy Chief of the Mystic Fire Department and the Training Coordinator of the Groton Fire Officers Association. I'm speaking tonight in support of the Town Hall Annex Fire Training Site. A little background of the project, Groton area is currently without a local firefighting skills facility, the closest one being the Eastern Connecticut Fire School in Willamette. Mutually departments in the past have trained together on structures being torn down and made available, but we have less frequent opportunities with strict guidelines and laws to get a house ready to train in. The Groton Fire Officers Association approached the town approximately six years ago for use of an area as the Town of Groton Public Works landfill. We are looking for a training, a training area developed jointly between the town and the Groton Fire Officers Association to reach a point for use of training by area departments while meeting all health and environmental guidelines. And the next step, on August 20, 2019, the site plan application was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The next step is to approve the site for a final development and sustainment. Why a local fire training center is needed. The Groton Area Emergency Services Response Plan centrally depend on a successful mutual aid network. The training must involve teams and individual skills. Without a local facility, it's difficult to provide training for new volunteers, critical to sustaining volunteer membership. And successful mutual aid is dependent on participating fire departments with opportunities to conduct realistic training, which include live fire events, coordinated offensive and defensive fire responses and coordinated search and rescue events. Like I said, locally, the closest facility is about 32 miles away in Willamette at the Eastern Regional Fire School. Who would use the facility? All members of the Groton Fire Officers Association, fire departments and ambulance associations would be invited to use the facility. Currently, we have 16 emergency service organizations. Groton Fire Officers Department members would continue to support the training facility and financially contribute to the sustainment of the facility. During the use of the facility, all operations would be under supervision and certified Groton Fire Officers, officers and Connecticut State Fire instructors. And each department that uses the facility has proven insurance coverage along with the Groton Fire Officers Association. Outside departments who are also our mutual aid companies would use the facility with a Groton Fire Officer or his or her designate on site at all times. What would be done at the facility is our annual required live fire training, search and rescue techniques, fast evolutions, which is a firefighter assistance search team. If a firefighter gets trapped, we have a special team that goes in and rescues the firefighter that's either trapped. Roof operations, ventilation, portable ladders, aerial operations, hydrant operations, bailouts, propane emergencies and vehicle extrication. And we strongly urge you to support the training facility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Chief Richards. I believe, Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Ken Richards, Chief, Ole Mystic Fire Department, 295 Cow Hill Road. I've also wanted to speak in support of the training facility behind the Town Hall Annex. I'm not going to go over everything that Deputy Chief Manfredi went over, but everything that he said, I'm 100% in support of. We're very fortunate in this area. I travel internationally teaching different programs and I strongly feel that our mutual aid system here in the Town of Groton is second to none. And to keep that to the level we need to keep it at and to keep our volunteers strongly trained and get volunteers in, we need a local facility that we can train in together and individually as departments. And that's a great site. I support it 100%. We've been working very, very hard with the town over the years to try to come up with a location that we had everything we needed to provide the training we need to provide the service to the community and the taxpayers in the Town of Groton. So at the end of the day, it's an outstanding site. We're looking forward to working with the town and making it a usable site, a safe site and a site where we can train our new people, our current people and our future people that come into the fire departments. So anything you need from us, from the Ole Mystic Fire Department- So anything you need from us, from the Ole Mystic Fire Department, please reach out. We're more than willing to do what we have to to make this happen. It's going to be a great asset for the area, and I'd like to thank everybody for everything you do. As we all know, I mean, as a fire chief, I know, but the jobs you do as town council RTM people, it's a thankless job, if I can say that. I mean, for everything you do right, there's 50% of the people out there saying you're doing things wrong. So I appreciate you stepping up and actually serving in the capacity you are for the town. And I would appreciate your support in this endeavor for the training center. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Lotring?
Yeah, it's Lotring, Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, councillors. My name is Arnold Lotring, and I am the chief of the Groton Long Point All Volunteer Fire Company. I live at 29 Island Circle, Groton, Long Point. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of the Groton Area Fire Training Facility. Thank you also for each of your dedicated efforts and personal sacrifices to lead our town of Groton government. For myself and my family, your efforts are deeply appreciated. Chief Manfredi has expertly presented the importance of this facility for the area fire protection plans. His efforts and chief Driscoll for Quonic Bridge have been particularly noteworthy over the last several years. For our small fire company in Groton Long Point, having a local training facility will play a pivotal role in my being able to keep my members proficient in skills and bring new volunteer members aboard. Also, it remains critical to train with mutual support partners before we meet one night on the fire ground. As you also all know, across our nation, all volunteer fire departments are struggling, with training being one of the major issues for new members. This is an important element to helping with this challenge. Also, I want to point out to all of you how fortunate we are in the Groton area. We have a mutual aid network of local career and volunteer departments, the Navy, and industry-based partners who operate seamlessly in a mutual aid system that is frankly not always the normal as being experienced right now by our neighbors in the Norwich area. This just doesn't happen by accident, but through the ongoing cooperation of our Groton Fire Officers and the support we receive from the Groton town. I know the challenges that you all face in today's budget climate are tremendous, but the safety and security of our families, our homes, and our businesses is today's problem. I would hope you would always give it an exceptionally high priority. I think this project and what it brings to our area first responders and our mutual aid network is deserving of your approval of this funding in the current budget that's being reviewed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief Driscoll?
Evening, Mayor, and to the town council and town manager, Bert. Fire Chief Timothy Driscoll for Quonic Bridge Fire District, speaking tonight on behalf of support for the training facility behind the Town Hall Annex. Last night, Spring Valley firefighter Jared Lloyd lost his life while battling a fire on the third floor. This is a tragedy that is just too common for us. We still have many line-of-duty deaths, all of which we try and prevent strictly by training, by having a training facility at the Town Hall Annex that will afford all of the firefighters that risk their lives daily for the residents of the Town of Groton, regardless of what district they belong to, regardless of what district they fight the fire in. We are all together as one. I've had over 30 years of experience in the fire service and can only tell you that the Town of Groton, albeit protected by several different fire districts, several different fire departments, are by far the most professional firefighters I've ever seen. I'm very proud and honored to say that I am part of the group known as Groton Fire Officers. And every day I come to work and proud to be able to serve not only the citizens, taxpayers of Quonic Bridge Fire District, but the visitors and residents of the whole entire Town of Groton. I have been involved in many different organizations and can only tell you that training is by far the most important and preventative matter of firefighter injuries and/or deaths. Firefighters, believe it or not, work more on reaction and muscle memory than by any other factor. The only way to attain that is by continuous training. Simple things as throwing a ladder, stretching a hose line, tying knots, are just these fine motor skills that can be forgotten in a matter of days if they're not continually practiced. It is a very difficult skill to hone in some of the most incredible emergency environments that you'll ever find. I ask that the council please support their departments, support our members, and help us in attaining that goal of being able to train everyone. I cannot think of a better way for the town to help support us by giving us that training facility. It's Town Hall Annex. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chief. And I just want to check one more sign to see if Mr. Hilbert is with us. Okay, I'm not seeing Mr. Hilbert. Mr. Bert, is there anyone else on your list?
Do you not have anyone else?
Just going through the list here really quickly, we have a lot of... Thank you for the RTM members who are joining us. I appreciate that. Okay, that is everyone that has signed up to speak. Thank you so much for coming out. And if there are more people at home that wanted to submit comments, please send them to council@groton-ct.gov, and we'd be happy to receive your comments. And as we go into this two-month period of budget deliberations between the council and then on to the representative town meeting, so... Thank you, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moves.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved by he and seconded by by a gardener. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with nine councillors. It is 8:39 PM. Thank you again, everybody, for coming out. We are adjourned. Good night, Superintendent. Good night, Chairperson, and be well.